SJC 12867, Robert Murchison and another, V. Sherburne, zoning board of appeals and others.
Mr. Murphy, good morning.
Good morning. This is the Chief Justice and the members of the panel. May I please the Court James Murphy for the plaintiff's appellant's? From the Dwyer case, crowding of an abutter's residential property by violation of the density provisions of the zoning bylaw will generally constitute harm sufficiently perceptible and personal to qualify the abutter as aggrieved and thereby confer standing to maintain a zoning appeal. This case followed that general standard. The assessment of what is permitted as of right and the change in the status quo as it relates to the green aggrieved claimant is the way to look at this. It is not a per se standard.
Now, the meekes and your adversary, and I guess also Judge Foster, say, what happened here was a conflation of the difference between the possibility of a violation and the question of whether or not, even if there were a violation, there's sufficient injury to obtain standing. What do you claim? I mean, you agree that there needs to be sufficient injury for standing, even if you're right about the width issue, correct?
It's plain that there are two parts to the standing adequacy analysis. One part being whether or not there's a legally cognizable interest, which I think everyone concedes, and secondly, whether or not there is particularized harm. Now, naturally, when in fact there's a density case, there's going to be some density-related harm. In this case, what you have, and in this case, almost in particular, you have, is you have a situation in which what exists as the status quo is a vacant lot, and what is going to be the status quo ante is going to be a house on that vacant lot, and that house is going to be across the street from this abutter, and that house is going to reduce privacy and open space.
But doesn't that mean you always win if you have a density claim?
In a build or no build case, generally, you will win. There will be a high probability of standing in those type of cases.
So when you say win in answer to Justice Bud's question, you just mean standing or the whole case?
Oh, no, it's definitely just the standing question. That just takes you through the gate.
Okay, but don't you have to look at whether it's de minimis or not? I mean, isn't the judge, don't you have to have some kind of showing? And if the judge says it's de minimis?
Well, I think the cases are, the standard that you have to put forth, if in fact your presumption of standing has been rebutted, which in this case we claim it has not, if that had been rebutted, then the proper standard is whether or not we have put forth credible evidence to substantiate the allegations. That's the standard.
So, I mean, it seems to me, though, that the virtue of being an abutter is you presume standing, right?
Say that again.
By virtue of being an abutter, just by virtue of being an abutter, you have presumed standing, right?
By virtue of being an abutter, you have presumed standing.
And you're saying that that was never rebutted?
Section B of our-
Nothing to do with density. That just has to do with the fact that you were an abutter.
So, we have two arguments here, Your Honor. The primary argument in the section A of our brief was that if in fact there is some sense that defendants rebutted the presumption of standing, then we say nonetheless, we have put forth credible evidence to substantiate our allegations. That's the section A part of our brief. The section B part of our brief, which could be a much narrower ground for this court to find in our favor, is that the presumed standing that we had was not rebutted at trial. And in particular, what we say about that is that there are some facts that they're not capable of being rebutted. So, then going back to what Justice Bud has talked about, there in some of these cases, like this one, for standing, there are going to be some unrebuttable facts that will then confer standing on abutters like mine.
Building or no building? Is that, that's your point of view, right?
That, on this one, building and no building, I think, are clear. So, for example, all of the cases that were cited by the defendants, that they want the court to instead look at.
But that's gotta be wrong. No build, I mean, you don't get to prevent someone from building on a buildable lot.
Well, the question is whether or not it's a build. I think it's clear in Sherburne, okay? What Sherburne says is that every lot shall conform to the dimensional requirements, and if it does, no building shall be built which does not conform to such dimensional requirements. So, if you violate those dimensional requirements, you cannot build a house. And so, in these type of cases, which are building permit cases, they're not variance cases, they're not special permit cases.
Again, you're falling into what Judge Foster says, which is that every time you claim that there's a zoning violation and you're an abutter, you have standing. And that's a revolutionary departure from the way this has been interpreted in the past.
No, I can give you examples as it relates to all of these cases.
And let me just, you know, you're talking about an invasion of privacy, right? What is the other one you're?
Open space.
I mean, you're 180 feet. That's an NFL kickoff, almost away from your neighbor. It's, that's completely different than the cases you cite, where literally, the building is looming over. You know, it's 14 feet away in Shepherd. It's very close. I mean, this is a radical change in the law, isn't it?
No, it is no way a radical change, Your Honor. So, let me just start with Dwyer. In Dwyer, the situation was that there were, that the builder was seeking to put two houses behind Dwyer's house, and that had 40,000 square foot lots. And they said in that situation, no, he's only entitled to one lot, one house, not two houses. And in-
In that case, they were already exceeding, there were violations of density already, right?
No, no, I don't think, when you look closely at the case, I think the inference that they were taking was that they were previously existing non-conforming lots.
Right.
And so, that was, I think, really the context of that. But what happens here is, why you, what is the agreement that the town in its zoning makes with its residents? And Sherburne makes the agreement that you're going to have three acre lots. They're not the Cape, we're not Boston, and so for Sherburne, that is what the standard is. There is a specific dimensional requirement that you cannot build there.
But they get to decide, I mean, there's deference that we owe to the zoning board of appeals as it relates to their own zoning and the dimensional requirements, the width. They are entitled to some deference for that.
No, deference is, deference is in the substantive case, Your Honor. On this one, on the standing, there's not an issue of whether or not, the substantive issue is whether or not there was adequate lot width. That is the case, that part is not decided. And on deference, if we get to the substantive case, the deference is eliminated in those situations in which there's a statutory interpretation. So, for example, in Perullo versus Croft, which is a case that's in the substantive realm, in that case, the question was whether or not there was adequate lot depth. And in that situation, although the local zoning board had decided that they were going to give deference to, they were going to permit there to be adequate lot depth, when it went to the appeals court, the appeals court said, no, you cannot interpret lot depth in that manner, and we will not give you deference, local board, in that situation. So, deference is really the issue on the substantive case, not on the gatekeeping standing part of the case. And so, and if I could go back in the Marhefka case, so that was a case in which it was in Sutton, and the lots were 80,000 square feet. And in that case, the adequate proof of individualized harm was a loss of a pond view, that they had the right to see through open space, and by building a structure, even though it was 80,000 square foot lots, that that was going to be a particularized individual harm that gave them standing.
And all- So, losing your view of your pond was deemed standing in that case?
If in fact what was going to happen was that you were going to build a structure that you could not otherwise build, and that's why-
But, again, describe the particularized injury that you're, because your client isn't being deprived of a view, right? You're describing a house being built on this lot, but that house is, again, 180 feet away from you. Your views are focused the other way, from what I understand. So, tell me, what's the particularized injury? Because I think that's what's got the land court animated, in that the violation doesn't have any real injurious effect on you.
Okay, first, factually, it's not true. If you look at the-
Don't let me misstate the facts, so definitely correct.
Okay, so, there is not evidence in the record that the house was, that he accepted the question that his house was oriented towards farm pond. He said specifically, no, he had views on all four sides of the house, and so that the reference in the record is, that's what the correct reference is in the record. So, he says he has views on all sides, and he says that what's happening is that this is going to decrease his privacy, because now there's going to be an extra house built there that isn't there now.
Right, but again, let me just push that a little bit. So, let me compare it to the Shepherd case. Shepherd case, literally, the house is 14 feet away, and the person is looking into their kitchen. You're 100, again, and I have trouble visualizing 180 feet, but it's like, it's almost, it's 60 yards away, right? So, you're looking, how is that interfering with your privacy when it's that far away?
Okay, so the record is, Your Honor, that in Sherburne, privacy is valued, and that these large lot sizes are important elements of what Sherburne's character is. It's rural character, and in fact, you're, now you're putting something in that view.
So, the fact that you can see it, but you would have the same, that would have the same impact if it didn't violate that, I can't remember what we're talking about, the width?
Lot width, Your Honor.
Even if it were built within the lot width, it were skinnier, you would still see it, right?
Then, we would not, we would not be able to succeed in this-
Wouldn't succeed on the merits, but you would still have the same problem on the, you would still see that house, and to you, that's enough, isn't it?
No, no, because you need the, you need the legally cognizable interest, and in this, in that situation, you would not have a violation of the density provisions of the bylaw. So, since you have an as of right, if you had as of right to build it, they can build it. I don't care whether or not it's right up to you. If you're in Boston next to Shepherd, and that house goes up right next to you, and that's as of right, you don't have a claim to bring forward. And so, in each of the cases, as I was trying to get to, Your Honor, in each of the cases that are cited by them-
Again, let me just, so, I understand they wouldn't have the right to build it if it were as of right. I mean, they would have the right as of right, but the impact on you is no different. Isn't that what the land court is focusing on, is that you can't identify any difference between, I mean, it's an illusory or de minimis injury, when we're talking about the difference here, when you're 180 feet away from that building, right?
I don't, I don't think it's different.
Describe how the fact that there, is it because it's three feet closer? Is that what makes it different?
No, I don't think there's any relationship at all to the amount of feet, Your Honor, to the amount of the imposition. I think that's all driven by the local bylaw. So, it's going to be different at the Cape, it's going to be different in Boston, it's going to be in Sherburne, it's going to be different.
So, you're saying the bylaw here is what's driving this? And because I know Justice Rubin said the bylaw was density-related. Do you agree that that's what this turns on?
Well, I don't think it turns on it. I think that what happens is that you have the provisions of the Enabling Act, and then you have the specific provisions that are contained in Sherburne zoning bylaw, section 4.2, and it says, as a basic requirement, that every lot shall conform to that dimensional requirement, and no building or structure in any district shall be built, located, enlarged, or structurally altered which does not conform to those dimensional requirements, and that's at 677.
Right, but aren't you, this goes back to the issue, let's assume there is a violation of the width limits. The standing principle essentially says, if it's de minimis, we don't care. We're not going to let you use our courts and hold up and cause expense if the fact of the matter is that the violation produces de minimis injury to you. Agreed?
I don't think that that is a proper analysis for this case, because we don't have a situation-
I'm sorry, which part is improper? The standard I set, or the characterization of, which I haven't yet, as de minimis?
I think the characterization of de minimis as it relates to a build versus build is completely wrong. If in fact it was, for example, if someone says noise or traffic, then that has the potential, if in fact they put in evidence on the defendant's side, they bring forth affirmative evidence, then in that circumstance, the court could find that, okay, on noise and traffic, now that your presumption has been rebutted, I find that any damage that you had allegedly suffered was de minimis as it relates to noise or traffic, but that is not the same whatsoever at all with respect to-
Didn't the land court find that they will not be actually harmed?
No, Your Honor, I think if you look at the land court decision, the very interesting part of the land court decision is that it's broken into three kind of sections. One section is broken into diminution of value, the other one is the stormwater, and then the third is this grouping of all other factors. So, on diminution of value, it's plain that what you had was that they had somebody that they proffered as an expert, and so that they, you know, rebutted the presumption on that issue. On stormwater, they had an expert, and we had an expert, so at least the presumption went away on stormwater, and then we were back to whether or not we had put forth credible evidence to substantiate the allegations. Not that we had succeeded, but credible evidence to substantiate the allegations. And then what the court did is that it based all of its other things based on the fact that it said it didn't necessarily believe Mr. Murchison. There was no affirmative evidence put in on any of those issues, and those by the defendants in that case, so that's why we say that they hadn't rebutted it at that one. But even if they had, by saying that they didn't believe Murchison, so that's not enough evidence on this side, on the plaintiff's side, that was only as it related to the noise and the traffic. But as it related to the other facts, the other facts were unrebutted and could not be rebutted, which were the distances, the fact that there was going to be a house where there formerly was not a house, that there was going to be a reduction of the open space, and that there was going to be a reduction of the privacy.
Oh, wait a second, wait a second.
Say that again.
I didn't say anything yet. I said, wait a second, please. What I was saying was, now, I wanted to say, is that I'm looking at these pictures, and it seems to me that these, there are two, there were two houses already there, and it's going to be built between 172 and 180 Lake Street, right? It's not like this is, like this wilderness area. It's been cleared, as a matter of fact, right?
So, the evidence in the case, Your Honor, was that one of those houses was approximately 600 feet away, and the other house was approximately 240 feet away. The other evidence in the case was basically-
So, the judge also took a view, right?
The judge did take a view, did not go inside the plaintiff's home, and the judge did not make any specific findings based on that view in the decision. So, although they took a view, there were no affirmative findings made based on that view in this case.
Well, you're not arguing, are you, that there aren't already two houses already that are nearby, right?
Say that again, Your Honor.
You're not arguing about the existence of those two houses, right?
No, those two houses that were-
And they're across the street from the-
Those two houses were built as of right with adequate lot width and adequate frontage, and they are as of right houses, and we have no claim against those houses. Now, what happens is this house, this lot that's in the middle, is traded back and forth between the house on the left and the house on the right. And that house in the middle, it's, the bulk of it is only 200 foot wide. The bottom of it has a little bit more of a width. But if you look at the actual lot itself, it's got 200 feet. This is a gerrymandered lot. They're trying to squeeze a third house onto that gerrymandered lot.
But that goes to the issue of whether there's a violation, does not go to the issue of injury. So, help me in your last, you're already over your time, but help me to understand. The best I can tell is, the injury you cite is that your client, standing on the 40-yard line from his garage, not even from his home, but from his garage, would prefer not to see a house on the goal line, not the nearest goal line, but the furthest goal line, 60 yards away. That that's, the injury you cite is that your client would prefer that there not be a house there at least 60 yards away. Is that, is there more than that that I'm missing?
There is more that you're missing. First of all, Your Honor, the facts of the house, facts were that his office is right there, also where that garage happens to be.
So, it's from his office, okay.
And so, he's there all the time. And secondly, the question is, for purposes of evaluating harm, is what was the status quo before, and what will be the status quo after? Before, there is no house there. He has a complete unobstructed view and privacy from that lot that's looming over his house, that's 20 foot higher in topography from where he is, and that he has that benefit of that open space and that privacy, and that's what he bargained for when he came into Sherburne and got three acre zoning. And to squeeze another house into that 200-foot window where no house should go is particularized harm to the plaintiff.
The lot's three acres, though, right? That's not in dispute.
The lot is three acres, but if you look, you'll see that they just squeeze it in at three acres.
They squeeze it in on three acres.
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Dane.
Thank you, Your Honor. May I please the Court Daniel Dane for the project proponents, Mary Ann Panarela and David Erickson. With me is Ms. Panarela, who is counsel in this case as well, and argued the case at trial court level, appeals court.
I'm sorry, I'm on this picture thing. Could you help me, which is the best picture to describe what the view is going to be from?
What page in the Record Appendix, or what's the best?
Which picture do you have?
Which picture do I have?
Yeah, in the record, like Exhibit 23T, is that the best one? Is that, what is that?
Your Honor, I don't remember the page references. There are a number of pictures in the record, as well as a view, when I've been there myself, based on the factual record in this case, what the land court based its factual findings on. And the question for this court is whether the land court committed clear error in its factual findings. It based its finding that there would be no injury here, based on distance, yes, sort of 60-yard line, as well as the fact that these are heavily wooded lots with a street in between them. And the lots themselves are, it's not only three acres owning, but Murchison's lot is 13 acres. So, if you stand-
Well, that's right, but I mean, you know, the garage is where it is, his office is where it is. Aren't we taking that as a given? Doesn't matter where he could have built it. He did build it on that, and that's where it is, right?
Right, so, based on, the question before this court is whether the land court committed clear error in finding that there would be no injury that meets the standard under Kenner and other cases as to the degree of injury that a plaintiff has the burden of proving. And it's not clear error based on the trial court record, which includes the distance between the houses, the condition of the properties being wooded, that there's a street in between them, that the lots are very large. On that entire record, as well as the testimony that the land court took into account, including the testimony of Mr. Murchison, which the land court found not to be credible, based on that trial court record, this court should not find that there is clear error, that the finding that there would not be an injury sufficient under Kenner, meaning that it must be more than de minimis, it must be substantial enough, so that there's no question that an injury has been suffered. That factual finding is based on four days of trial testimony.
What about build, no build? What about build, no build?
The question is not build, no build. The question is whether there's an injury from this house.
And that build, no build, isn't that the injury? Isn't that the injury that he's claiming to have? That you're going to build a house where there's no house right now, and he has to look at?
Yes, that's right. He's claiming that there is a house. The question is whether, whether a house in and of itself is an injury. What Kenner tells us is that there's a difference between an impact and an injury. So, an example of an impact would be the ability to perceive something. So, for example, if I can hear a noise or see a light, that might count as an impact. What Kenner requires is that there be something more than simply perception. There has to be injury. So, the difference between hearing a noise and an injury would be the difference of, I can hear a noise, and injury would be, the noise is very loud and keeps me up at night, and I can't sleep.
Let me, to give him his due, though, he's saying, okay, you've got this width requirement. I'm the abutter, and you're closer to me than the width requirement allows. So, that's my injury. It's not just that it's a violation, but that I'm actually, I don't know if the right word, impacted or whatever, I am, I am what they were worried about. I am, it's a little closer to me than what the bylaw allows. It's not like the side lot where the neighbor on the opposite side is complaining.
Right, except that lot-
That's, I'm not saying that's enough, but that's, is that enough for standing?
So, both, I guess, a factual and a legal reaction. Factually, and I think this is an important point, which is the nexus between the single claimed dimensional violation, which is lot width, and the claims of injury. So, the claims of injury are noise, light, traffic, and stormwater runoff. Those are the types of injuries claimed.
I think he's saying density.
And then this broad sort of density, which I'll get to, right? So, these are the types of injuries claimed. The violation that's claimed is-
Let me just pause it for a second, because I just, I want to give you a shot at exactly what I think. If there's an injury, it's this. He's saying that Sherburne has this extra protective three-acre thing with wide whiffs, and you're shrinking the width between me and my neighbor, and therefore, I have standing because I'm different from at least my neighbors.
Right, so there are a couple aspects of it. So, because this is a lot, a claim of lot width violation from someone across the street, there's no way of perceiving lot width. This is a proposal, proposed house, that complies with front yard setback, as well as the court found and the parties admitted, every other dimensional regulation. So, from someone across the street, there's no perception of lot width. And to say, as the appeals court, I think mistakenly did, that this violation, if it is a violation, which the building inspector and the ZBA both said is not, this is a question simply of how you measure lot width. But if there is a violation, it doesn't result in the house being closer than permitted. The closeness to the plaintiff is from front yard setback, which this house complies with. This house is set back 90 feet from the, from the street line. The requirement is 60 feet from, so that's sort of the factual response. The legal response is that the mantra, the talisman of density, in and of itself, is not an injury. Density is just a state of essentially how many units are there within a particular area. Density without context is neither a good thing nor a bad thing.
But he's saying that we do have context, which is Sherburne's context. Sherburne people get claustrophobic more easily than the rest of us. So, I take it that's what he's saying.
Right, so, the simple saying, if you're a plaintiff, putting these regulations aside, if you're a plaintiff and you say, well, what's your, what's the type of injury? In the standing analysis, you need to identify a type of injury and then prove the injury. So, the type of injury is density. And the question is, is that an injury without proof? And what the land court said, what the land court didn't, I think, did it through the application of consistent standing jurisprudence, which is the requirement of actually introducing evidence of injury. It's simply saying the word density, simply saying that I can perceive something, is not an injury. You actually have to say, okay, if there's a house, how am I harmed by that? What evidence am I putting on? So, for instance, again, if it's noise that is my injury, how does it keep me up at night? That would be facts that would establish an injury.
Otherwise, every, otherwise, every abutter would have standing. If you didn't have a particularized injury, every abutter would have standing.
So, it gets to the point of, let's, so now we come to the question of, can a municipality essentially confer subject matter jurisdiction on a court simply by adopting a series of dimensional requirements? So, Sherburne says three acre zoning, 250 feet lot width, 250 feet of frontage. If there's a violation of that, we, through our judgment, confer injury. We confer subject matter jurisdiction. And I don't, I think that that reasoning is flawed for three principal reasons. It's flawed, number one, because what the appeals court did in making an inference of an intent to create a protection of neighbors from an injury, it's based on no legislative history. The bylaws were adopted by town meeting, of which we have no idea what we're in town members' minds when adopting zoning. And you can't even make an assumption that the purpose of these dimensional requirements is to protect neighbors, because there are many reasons that dimensional requirements can be adopted. For instance- For instance, lot, lot size, lot width, these are requirements that may go to preserving municipal resources. We want to have a municipality that's, that has low density because we have limited, you know, wastewater treatment.
Those are the reasons why you should look to the specifics of the case, right? So if he was next door, and it, and there was an, an issue about a violation of the, the lot width, and it was going to be closer to his house than it should be, would he have standing then?
Well, again, if it's lot width, the house isn't closer to someone across the street.
No, 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 I know. I'm asking if it did, I'm asking if it was next door. I'm trying to figure out when he would have standing.
It's not, it's not the, it's not the adoption of a requirement that creates, that creates the injury.
I understand, it's not that by itself.
It has to be, you can't, what the appeals court, I think, did is it said, density plus proximity equals injury. And what this court's longstanding jurisprudence has said is, the, the analysis of the merits, whether there's a violation, is a separate inquiry, this is the Sweeney case, from whether there's an injury. At trial, if you're the plaintiff, you have the burden to put on actual evidence, and this is the Butler case that talks about evidence of a certain quality or quantity. So whether it violates setback or lot width or some other dimensional requirement, the question is, did the plaintiff at trial put on evidence of an injury?
But we're talking about standing right now, right?
That's right, so at trial, did the plaintiff put on evid, standing is injury, and the plaintiff under Butler has an obligation to introduce evidence.
But wait a minute, don't you have, don't you have the burden first to rebut it?
Well, the burden of persuasion is on the plaintiff and it never changes. If there's someone that is a party in interest under section 11 of the zoning act.
An abutter, I see.
There is such it as an abutter. There, the burden is considered met through a presumption which recedes through the introduction of evidence.
Right, now, what evidence do you introduce?
And so the, the, the land court found that, that it was rebutted through four days of testimony as well as a view, such as the distance between the houses, the fact that the houses are wooded, the fact that, that the, the lot sizes are three acres and 13 acres, the fact that there's a street in between. That evidence as a whole, the land court found, was sufficient to rebut the presumption. And the question is, is that clear error? And given the factual record, there's no basis to, to claim that that's a clear error.
But the question is too, though, in terms of standing, I mean, why do we have the standing requirement? We have it because we don't want everybody to be able to come into court, even though they don't have any interest in, in a violation of the zoning requirements. But there is this notion that there's a, an interest in having people who are affected by improper decisions made below.
Right, right, so, so.
I mean, because you could have somebody who's bought off, right? And the, I'm not saying that it happened here, of course, but I'm just saying you could have somebody who's bought off in the.
Sure, case is, case is settled. So municipalities adopt zoning requirements, dimensional regulations. And then a building inspector has to apply those. And if someone, either the project proponent or a neighbor, doesn't like what the building inspector did, they have a right to appeal to the ZBA. And the ZBA then makes a determination based on a set of facts and the dimensional requirements to see if they're met. This is essentially the merits, right? And sometimes the ZBA might get it wrong, right? So, so it's sort of troubling, geez, the, the, the local board sometimes gets it wrong. And what Article III of the Constitution tells us, as well as that, those words, person aggrieved in 4817 of the zoning act, what that tells us is, we're okay with sometimes a local board getting it wrong. Because the local board is at the best level to determine sort of community-wide costs and benefits. Where we're not okay, where local boards are not as good as the court, is when there's something about the decision that affects someone in a particularized, special and different way that causes an injury. So it's not the role of the courts to sit as a super zoning body to get, to make sure the ZBA gets it right every single time. The whole system is set up under the acknowledgement that it's possible that sometimes a ZBA will get it wrong, but they're in the best position to evaluate it based on community-wide costs and benefits. Only, there's a role for the court only when there's a particularized injury that has to be proven through the introduction of actual evidence under the Butler standard. And the land court found that under this court's and longstanding appeals court precedent, the way one proves that at trial was not met here. That there was, the, the presumption of standing was rebutted, and that the plaintiff did not meet, or the plaintiffs did not meet their burden of persuasion. The land court made factual findings, which are based on a four-day trial record with photographs, with a view. And based on that trial record, this court should not say, or cannot say, that that was clear error.
So she could have gone the other way, right? And, and that just would have been.
This would be a totally different case if the land court found.
Based on what she saw and, and figured out based on, on the facts.
Right, so what, if I can sort of sum up here, the, the question is, I think there's acknowledgement by both parties now that, that there is no per se standing. That in every case, you have to prove it. And if you, if you accept that, which is what standing jurisprudence, I think, establishes, there's a land court decision that says there was no injury, and that's subject to a clear error standard. The alternative, which is what Judge Foster thought that the, what Judge Foster's interpretation of the appeals court was, is that there can be per se standing, and that is inconsistent.
He's overstated it slightly too, right? Because your brother makes the argument that, again, the side lot. You, you have a side lot violation, but the person on the other side couldn't bring it, right?
Well, but, but, but no, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't mean.
They're in a butter, but they wouldn't be affected by the violation of the zoning.
Right, but I think the per se standing doesn't mean that there is necessarily standing in 100% of cases, such as side lot and someone on the other side. What the appeals court did was to say, density plus proximity equals injury. What the, what the appeals court did was relieve. Or one can interpret the appeals court decision as relieving a plaintiff of the obligation to introduce actual evidence. And if we reject the.
Yeah, they're saying as a matter of law, if you violate one of these regulations and you show that the violation has a impact that, has some, affects you because you're.
Proximity.
Proximity, but really, you're in a butter and proximate to, to the, you're a butter and proximate to the violation.
Those two things alone, under the appeals court analysis, and I think what's being urged by the plaintiff here, equals standing. And that is what's a new conceptualization, conceptualization of standing. That's what's a departure from existing standing law.
In the Amiki, say, there's a chorus from the Amiki that says, there's all sorts of serious public policy implications that would result from that.
That's right. I think that it would dramatically open the courts to any challenge by someone with proximity who alleges a violation, which would be a dramatic increase in the number of cases courts would need to hear.
Are you saying the proximity issue is basically a redundancy? That, that proximity is the same thing as being in a butter, right?
Well, I think that the question from Justice Kafka does distinguish a little bit between a butter and proximity in that if you're in a butter on the far side, you wouldn't have proximity to what the alleged violation is. But just simply proximity to the violation, of course, here we have over 180 feet, but proximity to the violation plus an allegation of violation, if that's enough to confer standing, that would be a, a radical departure from existing standing jurisprudence, which has always required the plaintiff to introduce actual evidence of injury.
Okay, your brother, your brother, Justice Lang asked your brother a question about which exhibit is best for us to look at. Do you have an opinion on that?
I mean, I, I don't have page number references, but the pictures.
I think your sister's bailing you out here.
You had some time.
I have a favorite. As trial counsel has pointed out, the plaintiffs themselves put no pictures into evidence.
But you put, you got pictures, there are pictures in the record.
There are pictures in the record that we put in, which show that you can't see.
So which one do you like best?
I mean, there, there are pictures of the street where you can't see, if you're looking across the street, you can't see through the trees to their house.
Is there someplace in the record an explanation of what these pictures show?
The pics, I mean, there are pictures.
It's very hard to tell.
Right, the pictures are, are taken essentially from the street to the property line, looking in both directions.
There's also some taken aerial, there are some aerial pictures.
Some aerials which would show the dis, the distances between the properties. And the pictures show that at least standing on the street, if you're looking toward the Murchison property, you can't see through the trees. I went there yesterday and stood at the, at the location of the building and looked directly at the Murchison, where the Murchison house was, and I could not see the house through the trees. Now, obviously, my personal view is not evidence, but the land court took a view.
But you're going to be, the house is going to be taller than you, I assume.
The house may be, may be taller, but the point is, is from that location, you couldn't see the Murchison house through the trees.
Can I ask you a question about, these are the houses that you say, they, 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 it would be built between two other houses. Are the two other houses on a higher elevation too?
Pardon me?
This house that's going to be built, right, that you want to have built, it's up, up the hill.
There is a great tray, a great change of, I think, 20 feet over a distance between, between the two main houses. It's over, it's 180 feet to the closest corner of the garage, from the garage, from Murchison's garage.
Okay, that's not my question. My question is, are there already two existing houses, right?
There are two existing houses.
This one that's going to go between them, is it going to go between them higher up?
Lower down.
Lower down.
Lower down.
So that they're already, to the extent they're visible, they're already visible?
That's correct. I don't think they're visible, but I don't think any of them are visible. This is.
But the elevation, you're saying, doesn't make any difference?
At, at that distance, the elevation still looks relatively, you know, across. This is not, the, there's lots of standing cases where a proposed development, usually an apartment building or an office building, looms over another project, excuse me, looms over someone's house, where, where they're going to eat breakfast is suddenly going to be cast into shadow. There's no shadow that this house is going to, going to cast, there's no looming. This is quite a distance through the woods, and they're simply not visible from the two properties. And in, in that respect, you, this court should not be able to conclude that the land court committed clear error in finding that there is no injury if this house is built. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. We'll take a morning break.